All right, want to welcome everyone to Monday, June 2, 2014, to the Murfreesboro City Council. We're going to be discussing the 2014 and '15 City of Murfreesboro budget. And before starting, want to turn it over to Councilman Ron Washington for our prayer and a pledge.
Yes, will you bow your head for a moment, please? Amen.
I plead to the heavens, to the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, want to thank everyone for being here. See a lot of familiar faces, and I know you'll be happy to hear that we've moved the outside agencies to the end of the budget, so we appreciate y'all staying here with us the entire time. So, want to turn it over to Mr. Lyons, our city manager, to start the process.
Thank you, members of City Council. We are excited to deliver to you the proposed fiscal year '15 budget. What I'd like to do is maybe take about 10 minutes and give you all a big-picture overview of the budget. So we will go to a powerpoint here. Okay, here we go. So the theme in this year's budget is "A Year to Plan." And I'm going to talk about the number of different ways that we're going to plan. The cover of this year's budget features the Murfreesboro Airport and MTSU airplane. And the quote that I found that really spoke to what we were going to do this year was, it says, "To accomplish great things, you must not only act, but also dream; not only plan, but believe." So y'all remember, two years ago, when we put the budget together, I asked the city departments to give me a song that was indicative of their budget. We had a lot of fun with that. You'll remember the city manager's song that year was the Rolling Stones' "You Can't Always Get What You Want, But Sometimes You'll Find, You'll Get What You Need." So as I began to think about the different movies that our city departments were going to bring to us, since we had an airplane on the cover of our budget, we've got a little airplane clip that we'd like to show from cable TV, please. Kind of think about the budget when you watch this clip.
Stand by for the most extraordinary chain of events ever swept up into high adventure. Airplane is drama.
This is Dr. Brody at the Mayo Clinic. There's a passenger on your Chicago Flight 209 who's scheduled for a heart transplant.
Airplane is music.
There is only one river, there is only one sea.
Airplane is dancing. Airplane is action.
Hey Larry, where's the forklift?
Forklift, just over there with the baggage loader.
Airplane.
Now, who doesn't think budget isn't fun? Mr. Crummell and I love this time every year. So let me share a couple of the movies before I get into the serious business. A few of the movies our city departments shared with us. Judge Sellers brought us "My Cousin Denny." This one I love, Cynthia Holloway, Edward Scissorhands. Might see that on Medical Center Parkway. Water and Sewer, I love the quote from Darren Mama, it's just that I lost my position as the team's water distribution engineer. And then, of course, the folks in Communications, aka cable TV, brought us Will Ferrell and Rod Burgundy. So one more clip, please. This is Alan Bozeman.
I don't know how to put this, but I'm kind of a big deal.[283.58][283.58](laughter)
Like I said, budget's a lot of work. We spend about six months out of the year putting budget together, but we do try to have a little bit of fun with it. So thanks to the folks from Communications Department. And as I begin, I really want to thank the Finance Department, Melissa, Erin, Anna, and their whole staff do a tremendous amount of work to get the document to this point. Jim Shannon, myself, worked hard at it. And our department heads certainly worked very hard at bringing you the proposals you're going to hear from over the next two days. So as we begin to kick off what's going to happen next year, just a quick look back at what we've accomplished this year. You can see on the screen there, there's many things that we're awful proud of, and the council's leadership in this has given us the ability. We reduced crime by 2% last year. Police Department got accredited. We bought new equipment in the Fire and Rescue Department. We've got new financial software coming, as well as human resource information software. We're now accepting credit cards. In fact, the Water and Sewer Department cut over to their new system this morning, and hats off to the IDT Department and Water and Sewer for making that transition very smooth. We've adopted new building codes, recruited new jobs, and as you can see, even down to helping first-time homebuyers in rehabilitating 12 homes. City received a number of awards this year. We received 21 awards at the Parks and Recreation Association meeting. Our honor guard was national champs in fiscal year '14. We received two tellies, a couple of awards for our budget and for our audit. Our credit ratings were raised. Murfreesboro was just named as one of the top 10 fastest-growing cities in the country. And as I mentioned, the Police Department was accredited. We've got some big capital projects, Veterans Parkway, the Broad Memorial Project, Joby Jackson Parkway. We'll open a new elementary school in August in Overall Creek Elementary. We've worked on our community centers and ballfields. We've opened up a course for the youth called Bloomfield Links. Acquired property for the new police headquarters and new communications equipment for our police officers and our firefighters. Really exciting stuff. This is the stuff that has happened since you met this time last year, so hats off to you and to the team for some significant accomplishments. As I mentioned, we've kind of had four anchor points to the budget this year, and we talk about a year to plan. Some of those actions are going to include new police officers, an indoor tennis complex, the new police headquarters, and we'll fully implement BLS. We've got new houses, new businesses, and new investment in our community. And as I mentioned, it's the year to plan. We'll be starting our comprehensive plan. We're currently working on our classification and compensation plan, and we've got a goal to plan for a new centralized building maintenance where we can become more efficient and do a better job. And we know we're going to grow bigger, better, and stronger, and create Murfreesboro's future. Our general fund revenues this year are projected to increase $5.3 million. The property tax and sales tax account for two-thirds of our budget. One-third comes from everything else. And the property tax revenues, while they look slightly flat in this scale, they are projected to go up about $1 million. This has been a reappraisal year, so our tax rate actually will go down to $1.20, but we're still going to generate over $1 million in new money. Our sales tax has been one of the areas that certainly have helped us grow and be able to fund the kind of budget that we presented to you. It's actually grown 49% in the last five years, so significant growth in our sales tax. The budget does recommend using about the same amount of money as we have in the past years from fund balance. And while we budget for the use of fund balance, as you can see on the next slide, we've only had to use it two times. And that green bar that you see to the left, that was actually the purchase of the site for the conference center where the Embassy Suites is located. So most of the years that we bring you a budget that includes fund balance, we turn around and generate more revenues than we projected. And we say this every year, just because the council sets a budgeted level of expenditures, it does not mean we run out and spend that. So as you can see on that graph, we've actually had budget surpluses in eight of the last 10 years. General fund expenditures are proposed to increase by $5.2 million. This graph, and I'll give you some follow-up information, while that bar graph looks like it's jumped up some, because of some of our accounting changes, there've been some departments that had formerly been a separate fund are now housed in the general fund, most notably the Parks and Recreation Fund. That wasn't showing up in some of the bars to the left, but they are showing in the current year. About half of our costs are for personnel. That's no surprise. The work of the city gets done by our great employees, so about half of our operating budget is due to personnel costs. Quick summary on our expenditures. The largest increase in this year's budget is the Police Department, which is up about $1 million. Our debt service decreased $670,000. And we were also able to move back the adjustments for property tax appeals, down by $900,000. We've got the four goals established by council, so what you'll hear from the various city departments when they come forward is to talk about some of the projects. I've highlighted just a few here. And our safe and livable neighborhoods goal, we've got the transition to BLS, open Overall Creek Elementary, the new radio system, and the new police headquarters. The second goal is strong financial and economic health. We're proud again to look at you and say we've got no property tax increase in this year's budget. We've got our second contribution to MTSU for their science building. When we look at our health insurance, that'll be the final item on the agenda today. Cowan has helped us bid that process out and bid out that health insurance coverage, I should say. And the discounts from the Blue Cross Blue Shield Network are real. Had we stayed with our current provider, our health insurance costs would have been $800,000 more than they are with the Blue Cross Network. So that clearly is a step in a direction to help us still provide great benefits to our employees, but at a lower cost. And then the road projects. We've really focused on customer service with our Stars program and our Service Excellence training. We've developed a customer service survey form so residents can talk to us about how we're doing and get some feedback from us. We'll renovate Sportscom this year, and the new computer systems will clearly help us do a better job and be more efficient. Engaging our community is the fourth goal set up by City Council, and we're really looking for ways to hear from our residents. The comprehensive plan really would become a great way for us to reach out and hear from the community. And the consultant that we hope to bring a contract to in June has some really innovative ways to tap into what the community wants to see in Murfreesboro's future. We've got a number of Citizens Academy in City Hall, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and that's another great way to help share information about the work that's being done. And the classification and compensation plan, we really want to engage our employees and get their input. And a job analysis questionnaire will be sent to them very shortly. As I begin to wrap up my part of the presentation, we're certainly proud to have funded 3.5% pay increases for our employees this year. When we look back between the last two fiscal years, Murfreesboro led the state in pay increases. And with the recommendation this year, we believe it's four straight years that the city of Murfreesboro has led the state of Tennessee in pay increases for our employees. This is a graph that shows in a survey of city managers what they were going to do in their budgets. Murfreesboro's there, off to the left at 3.5%, Forest Hills at 3.3%, a number of communities at 3%, a good number of them at 2%, and a number of communities at 1.5%. So I think that certainly speaks to how we're trying to reward the great work done by our staff. And lastly, this is your leadership team. I think they've worked hard to give you a budget that's going to meet the goals that you all set forth, but as you look at the cover of the budget, it says "The Proposed Budget." It's going to be the council's budget once we get your feedback, your input, and suggestions for changes, and we look forward to that conversation and that dialogue. So with that, Mayor, just a quick overview. If there's any questions at this point, we'll be ready, I think, to go into the outside agencies.
Okay. Have any questions? All right, we'll move into outside agencies. And you have in your separate binder with other information, you'll have a list that has the 2014, 2015 proposed budget request for funding from outside agencies. It's got information from 2010 all the way to what's recommended to be budgeted for 2014 and 2015. And probably like to do what we have done in the past, instead of reading out each individual recipient, just ask if there's any things that we have that need to be looked at or things that want to be changed, or if that's something that you want to discuss.
And you do have a number of representatives here, Mayor, for any questions about any of these individual agencies that you wanted to ask.
Yeah, absolutely.
That certainly would be available to you as well.
And I'd be remiss to say, seeing all the individuals who are out there, with what we deal with in our community, you do a lot of the heavy lifting, and we appreciate that. There's so many different organizations that do so many things, from REIT to SUC to Greenhouse, and not just to say those two, but there's so many things and so many people that you serve that we can't do it the way that you do, and we appreciate what you do. Do you have any questions of individual agencies, or any questions of what we have?
I would like to discuss among the councilmen is by Greenhouse Ministries. I think this is the first time they've requested, I may be wrong, some funding from outside agencies, and they do such a wonderful job.
What number are they?
Number 48. 48, and they do such a wonderful job. I want the councilmen to consider funding. Now, we normally don't fund $2,500 on first.
That's cap.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So.
I would love to see you all consider doing that.
And I think what may be a good idea is, and what we've done in the past, is to make a list, and then we'll have to, because the budget that has been presented is what we have advertised for our public hearing. So any changes that have to be made, we'll have to make that after the public hearing. So I think what may be good is if we have any questions for individual agencies that we can ask those, but if you have any specific changes, we could do that after the public hearing.
Yeah, and I think what we've done in the past, Mayor, and certainly council can handle it, hey, like, we don't want to change any of the numbers till after the budget public hearing, but Ms. Wright, myself, we're going to be keeping a list of things that you think you may want to change, and while it may not be a formal motion, if we get a consensus from the council, we'll compile that in a list and hand you all documents so that you could look at it before you would take a vote on it. So for instance, in Mr. Washington's suggestion, $2,500 for Greenhouse Ministries, if that was something that was, I see a lot of heads nodding saying we're generally supportive of something like that. We'll keep that list going, as well as any other changes that you'd like to make.
Rob, is that the only new first-timer that we have on this year's list? I know there are three that are not funded, but I believe those other three are ones that we've considered in the past. Is that correct?
Yes, and my approach on the outside agencies is to, essentially, we've been putting in what agencies got last year, and then leave it to the council's discretion to see where you might want to make an increase. Likewise, since in this case, Greenhouse didn't get any money, I don't typically make that change in the budget, but leave it to your discretion as well. So yes, sir, short story is, I didn't put anything in there since it was a new request and wanted to get direction from you.
But it is the only brand-new request.
It is the only brand-new request. There are others that have requested that have not been funded, but they've requested before.
But they've requested in the past.
Do you want these now, Mayor?
I think either way is fine.
I think we can go ahead and suggest and talk about it, but just save them till after the public hearing.
I would like to see the Boys and Girls Club be funded fully at their request.
Okay. And they're number 40 on our list?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lyons, if you would add that to our list.
Yes, sir.
I'll only comment on that one, and because it's such a dramatic change. Personally, I would rather it's double the amount that we've given in the past, and I mean, they're going from $2,500 to $25,000, and I think that's a significant increase. And I know we normally let people come in at $2,500, and I think doubling it at this point, when we're nowhere at a deficit on the total budget, that $25,000 may be a bit excessive.
I do agree that it needs to go up, but perhaps the 10 times what it currently is may be a little, maybe they're somewhere even in between what Mr. Smother and Mr. Young have mentioned, perhaps for us to discuss as we go along. But I'm fully supportive of increasing that amount, but multiplying by 10 may be a little much to bite off for this year.
Is there anything specific this year, why it's changing so much? I mean, is there a, maybe we could ask them what it is that the need for that is?
And it could be they've asked for the similar amount before, but we've just not raised the amount.
Hey, Mr. Eric, how you doing?
I'm doing great. Over the last five or six years, we've increased our numbers of kids that we serve in our facilities. Last year, we served over 3,000 kids in our facility versus two years ago was 28, the year before that was 26. So our numbers are continuously growing. We're the number one and number two Boys and Girls Club in the state when it comes to most kids attending on the daily, average daily attendance. We serve about 700 kids a day. We pick up from about 40-something schools. We serve about 11 city schools out of the 14, I think, that we have here. So we have a fleet of buses, 10 buses, 10 buses that go pick up from 40 schools. So we're constantly increasing. Today was our first day of summer. We had to have a waiting list for our kids over there because we just don't have the staffing to accommodate the least. Right now, I think we have about 40 kids on the waiting list, and their age ranges from five to nine years old.
Mr. Sears.
What other sources of income do you have, other than what you're requesting?
We do fundraisers, of course, individual giving, board giving, and corporate giving as well.
About what percentage of your income would you say come from these people?
Probably about, yeah, from our fundraising.
And the donations and?
Yeah, probably about 16%. Yeah, so.
Do you know what your total annual budget is?
2.2.
2.2 million?
Yes, 2.2 million.
Yes.
If it would be helpful, we can scan their application and email it to you so that you will have it to review before Thursday night. It might answer other questions you might not think of tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's 1% of their total budget for funding for this.
Mr. Sears, thank you for, God, and thank you for what you do. We appreciate it.
And I'm not trying to justify why I think that a 10-fold increase is too much. I'm just trying to explain that I think every person on this list here has a very good cause, and I'm not even going to name one of them, because I don't want to leave one of them out, because I think they're all excellent causes. And they all do a tremendous job of providing service. And obviously, with 1% of their, this isn't going to affect their budget that much one way or the other, because like you just pointed out, it's about 1% of their total budget. So, you know, that's, that's the reason that I think that $5,000 would be adequate for this year. And if the economy continues to recover, we'll try and give them a little more next time, I think. But the, I just, I don't see anybody else even requesting an increase anywhere close to that. Honestly, we just don't have the money to give away.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Well, we can, if you have any other suggestions, feel free to email those to Mr. Lyons.
Yeah, I'll get you the, we'll get you the application. We'll email that to you. And like I said, we weren't looking for any final decisions today. You're going to have a couple votes on this before it's put in final.
Okay. And Mr. Lyons, just for the public's information, some of these larger ones that we fund, they're actually set by formula, the way that we do those, as far as sharing with other agencies in the funding of those, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Library Chamber Commerce, tourism.
Which is the majority of the requests that we have from outside agencies. Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Lyons, our Destination Rutherford commitment, is that a five-year commitment?
I believe we're in year four of five, but in talking to Mr. Latour, because of what Destination Rutherford's helped, been able to achieve here in the community, they may, you know, pick up and do Destination Rutherford version three or four. I forget how, I've been at this for a while. But, you know, while, I think this may be the final, this may be the final year of the last round, but in talking about it, Mr. Latour anticipated going back out and doing another campaign.
Thank you. Mr. Sears.
And I'd just like to say that I thank all the outside agencies for the great job you do in our community. You know, it takes pieces working together to make us the top, one of the top 10 cities in the United States that people are flocking to. We're coming in about 4% a year, and it's because of your outside agencies and helping people. It's all about helping people, and I'd just like to, on behalf of the council, say thank you for the hard work and the endless hours that you put into helping our community be prosperous.
I want to thank everyone for coming, and also, I know as we talk about growth that's in our community, that each of you are, the opportunities that you have to deal with are growing as well, and your services are growing that you have to be able to provide. So however we can be here, not just financially, I think I can speak on behalf of city staff and the council, we want to help however we can. So don't hesitate to call or let us know if it's a fundraiser, you're needing help. We helped a group with a tent the other day on a tent permit, so if there are things that sometimes you have an oh-my-moment, just let us know, and we'll do our best to accommodate. And if anything, just thank you for what you do for our community. So you're welcome to stay all the way through via German.
I wouldn't recommend that.
Yeah. So as Mayor Bragg would say, you're free to stay, you're free to leave. We'll move to the, we'll give it a few minutes to clear out. See you, John.
20 seconds. Please, please.
Makes him mad when I'm calling out like that.
Couldn't be any better than I was kicking him.
Okay, we'll move to Evergreen Cemetery.
You have a separate report cover for that. Mr. Lyons, will you be presenting this, or?
I don't know that anybody from the cemetery is here. This is one of the code requirements, they send you a very straightforward, simple budget. Be happy to answer any questions.
So we're showing on Evergreen Cemetery, $475,700 in revenues and likewise in expenditures. And then on the back sheet, you'll see the salary schedule. It looks like $287,000 of their 475,000 is in salary expense. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the Parks and Recreation Department budget.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, good afternoon. The Parks and Recreation Department continues to work toward improving its services, programs, and facilities for the enjoyment of its residents. I know Mr. Lyons has mentioned some of the accomplishments of this year. I'd like to mention probably a couple more. One is, we've been working with a corps of engineers for the past 12 years. One is, we've been working with the Corps of Engineers for the past 12 years on a wetland restoration. We finished that this year with Phase Three in Oaklands Park, and I've had several good comments on that. Of course, that included the wetlands at Murphy Springs where Discovery Center is, and the Black Fox and Nickerjack area as well. We just finished hosting the 8th Annual TSSAA Spring Fling, and we got a lot of good press on Spring Fling and good comments from the TSSAA folks, including the Chairman of the Board, which I spoke with and was very pleased with what Murfreesboro had to offer. In addition, we hosted 60 other athletic tournaments, including the Tennessee Cup, a premier invitational tournament with 236 teams. And we hosted the BPA World Series this last year with 128 teams. And we hosted the TSSAA Girls Softball State Championship, which has been held in Chattanooga for the last several years. For the first time in Murfreesboro, and it's going to be here for several more years to come. We estimate these tournaments generated approximately $25 million in economic impact for our community. As Rob had mentioned, and Mr. Lyons had mentioned, we did win 21 state awards at the Tennessee Recreational Parks and Recreation Conference in this past November, one of being the prestigious President's Award, and then the best in community centers programming and other type programs there. In keeping with our mention statement, we did offer 289 staff facilitated programs, and we partnered with 145 other organizations, which added tens of thousands of folks to our program. We've established new programming areas, such as our youth development, which draws together youth enrichment programs and expanded our athletic, outdoor cultural arts programs, our leagues, our activities, and our workshops. We've increased our training. One of the things we're very proud of this year is we've implemented our department-wide concussion policy. We've developed a youth engagement manual, and we've partnered with the Children's Advocacy Center for staff to complete the Darkness to Light Training, which is sensitivity training for all the staff members. And of course, the youth engagement manual goes to all of our volunteers that we engage in all of our activities. Our facilities experienced an increase this year. We had in Patterson, Sportscom, Cannonsburg, and World Records Station, user visits registering a little over 412,000 visitors. If you add that to the other user visits for the playgrounds, the athletic facilities, et cetera, that number exceeds 1 million user visits in our park system. In addition, to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to participate, our department issued $455,782.50 in financial aid this year. Of course, we want to continue to meet the goals that are set by the City Council, improving our activities, our programs, our special events, and our facilities. And we want to continue to build safe and livable neighborhoods. Our commitment to the development of enhancing our parks and recreational facilities and greenways while promoting and hosting local, state, regional, and national events will build strong and financial stability within our community. And of course, we always strive to provide service excellence and seek the input of our residents to ensure that our programs and facilities are meeting their needs. In regards to the budget that you're looking at, there's two figures that I want to point out that shows up in the addition to fixed assets. One is a million 638,474, which is for greenways. And that is the federal amount of money, the 80%, that will be dedicated to greenways this year. The other is a million 870,000, and that's 500,000 from Christie Houston, a million 370,000 from MTSU, which will go to the construction of the indoor tennis facility. Those are put in our budget for accounting purposes. They're what I call pass-through funds. And so Ms. Wright puts them in there. She's got to account somewhere in the city budget for those, so they show up in our budget. Also, there is a six-month operating budget for tennis, indoor tennis facility that's in there. And then there's about $162,000 worth of startup equipment, which will be a one-time expense, which it shows up in this budget, to furnish the tennis center as well. And those are really the big additions, I guess you would say, to the Parks and Rec budget. And I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have regarding any of the other line items or any area within the Parks and Rec budget.
Mr. Goodwin, would you also tell about the award that was presented to Mr. Reneir?
Yes. Each year, the Tennessee Recreation Parks Association has a distinguished fellow award. It's the highest award that is recognized in Tennessee through the Tennessee Recreation Parks Association. And this year, that award was given posthumously to Mr. Dennis Reneir. We were very pleased. And at the Parks and Recreation Commission, Ms. Reneir came and accepted that on behalf of Dennis.
Council members, you have the Parks and Recreation budget in front of you. And also in your salary schedule, it's the corresponding page 39 that will correspond to the budget.
Mayor, I know in talking to you individually, I heard a couple of questions about the tennis pro position. And I'd called Mr. Goodwin this morning and would like for him to explain how that position's being structured.
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. When we were looking at the tennis pro, we looked really kind of nationwide at what a tennis pro would be funded at, I guess, for a salary. One of the things that we found in the operation of indoor tennis facilities was the key thing to make indoor tennis facilities self-supporting was the tennis pro. We talked to several people that operated indoor facilities. I know we went to Springfield, Missouri, visited there, the Cooper Center. They have 12 indoor courts. And when we talked to them about the finances, and when we talked to them about, you know, we would like, if we could, to have this tennis center operate where the revenues generated pays for the operations. And that's what happens at the Cooper Center. They said the key was to make sure that you hire a tennis pro because about 40% of their revenues for instruction come from that one individual and the things that he was overseeing, which was the other professionals and so forth. And so when we looked at the operations, we put a tennis pro in there. We budgeted that basically at about 48.8. When we were looking, those ranged anywhere from mid-30s to mid-70s. So we kind of hit a midline when we did that. Now, the way this was operate, the tennis pro, what we would propose, would work a regular schedule. They would run a tennis academy that had up all the instruction. They would network with the Murfreesboro Tennis Association, with the USTA. And they would, everything that they would collect for lessons, academy, everything that we would have under their bailiwick in that 37 and a half hours would be revenues that would come back to the city. We would like to structure theirs, their compensation, so anything past that would be on a percentage basis. The other thing that we've talked about, and I know that Mr. Crumley, Mr. Lyons and I have had a conversation about this, where that percentage basis would kick in after they had met the obligation for covering their salary. So we think that still would be a way of doing that. I know we talked about several different ways, but we want to make sure that we get the most out of this person. I know at Cooper, Cooper Center, it was around a $240,000 line item for them for tennis instruction. So that person really generated about three times their salary back in revenues toward that tennis facility. And they didn't start off that way. They started off without one. And they found out that they were hitting about 60%, 70% revenues. And so the key, and the things that we have found, and the things that we've talked about with other folks that found the secret to formulas in terms of trying to really cover as much as that expense or get as flat as they can with expense, was making sure that you hire not just a tennis pro, but a very quality person because the amount of revenue that they're going to generate and the types of programs that they're going to generate will depend specifically on that individual.
Are these other positions, like the gym supervisor and head dance instructor, that's still, those are also part of this complex, right? Why is this under, they're the same thing?
That's different.
Okay.
That's different. What we have is, we have four full-time positions in there for the indoor tennis. We proposed to operate 104 hours a week. We feel like it's necessary with the money coming in, the supervision that's needed, the contact with the individuals that are coming in, that we have a full-time person. Of course, those schedules would be staggered over that 104 hours. So what we have is, we have three people in operations and one in instruction. We would have a operations coordinator, and that's generally what we have now that supervises centers. At Sportscom and at Patterson, we have superintendents. And then under them, we have operation coordinators and assistant operation coordinators. So we've structured the supervision of the center or of the indoor tennis center very similar, but we want to hire people that have tennis backgrounds. One of the things that I want to mention, just to kind of give you a size and scope, the indoor tennis center is going to be somewhere around 70,000 square feet. Now, if you're familiar with the old Ag Center that we tore down, that was about 11,000 square feet. So it's almost seven times the size of that. The Patterson Center is 112,000 square feet or 111,600. Sportscom is around 45,000. So it's right in the middle between Sportscom and Patterson size-wise. And staff-wise, it's half of what we put in the other, with more operating hours. We operate 88 hours at Patterson and Sportscom.
And the facility's planned to have eight courts, is that correct?
Eight courts, yes, sir.
Is that how many courts we have currently on the original O fort?
On the original O fort, that's what we have. We have four and four.
So that footprint you're talking about on the building will be basically a little bit larger than that area that encompasses that eight-court area?
If you took those courts the way they sit and pulled them around and paralleled them to each other, and then provided space in the middle for restrooms and so forth, that's essentially the size of that facility.
So what, we're talking about the expenses and then our original capital outlay, but what are you, what's your feel on revenue coming in?
Mayor McFarlane, I hope that, what I hear is it takes about three years to build a program. I hope at the end of three years, either me or whoever my successor is is standing here and tells you that we're at a break-even point for operating in revenues. That would be the goal. That's why we're setting it up, the way that we're setting it up. The first year, we're looking at maybe collecting about half, then building the program and getting into it. So we think 50 to 60% may be the first year, getting on up to 70, 75%. And then third year, hopefully, getting somewhere around 90 to 100%. And I hope that answered your question.
Mr. Lyons, this is probably more of a question that, with Parks and Recreation, if you were to take road construction, we've had a lot of projects under construction in Parks and Recreation. And so we're going to have tennis facility, Sportscom, possibly the West Park, just finishing McFadden. I'm missing, we finished McKnight Park, Barfield, Sportscom. So how, because, Mr. Goodwin, they're great at Parks and Recreation, but do we have some help on managing these construction projects? Either relying on the architects, or how are we going to make sure that these are pushed along?
We'll look at, you know, these on a case-by-case basis to see where we might want to bring in some outside help. But clearly, you know, that we want to make sure the projects get done, get done on time. And that'll be a conversation for Parks and Rec and myself to sit down and talk about the project management piece. I meant to mention earlier when we were talking about the tennis complex, we did open bids on this project last week. They did come in more than we had expected. So I'll be sitting down with the architect, and I've got a meeting with Mr. Massaro later this week to talk about where we go from here. But, you know, we're going to need to, we've got a budget on this project, and it's, we can't go over what was set. So we're going to have to step back and take a look at where we're at because we're not coming back for more money at this point.
And Mayor, the city engineering has been very good in the past. I know Patterson and some of the other projects, assigning someone to Parks and Rec or assigning it to the project. Even with the outdoor pool renovation, they had someone that was there pretty much every day checking concrete pours, those kind of things. So that really helped, and we really appreciate the Engineering Department doing that. And I would anticipate that would be similar.
So do we have, on the, back to kind of the tennis pro and generating the income through the pro, do we have, is there a fallback? I mean, if it, if we get three years down the road, and let's say that pro, he or she's only generating $30,000 a year, not even enough to cover their own salary, can the thing run without it, without that person? And is that a year-by-year budget decision that we make? Or how does that kind of work? Is there a, is there a fallback, I guess, is what I'm...
Mr. Lyons, there's always a fallback. And one of the things that we'll be doing is monitoring that really closely. We've had a lot of interest in that position, not just around Murfreesboro, but in the USTA. I think our facility is one of them that is being talked about quite heavily. I know that they've already started talking to us about holding state and regional tournaments. And we haven't, we haven't put the first thing in the ground out there yet. So, yes, that's one of the things that we'll be monitoring. One of the things we'll set for goals for that individual, and hopefully, we'll hire somebody that's a high performer.
Lanny, I know the mayor has already mentioned the Western Park. It says here that one of our goals for 2015 is to acquire the land for the western area of Murfreesboro. How are we coming along on that project? And at what point will the council be able to have some input on the land that is going to be acquired? And how are we going to pay for it, I guess? Obviously, I know some of the cementals or things that you guys have reviewed have ranged anywhere from maybe 100 acres to 500 acres. I think that's kind of wide open as far as you trying to make a decision, unless we give you some direction as to what we think is realistic, to not only what we want to purchase, but what do we want to develop on it? want to purchase, but what do we want to develop on it? And at what point will we see that?
Well, Mr. Schmuddelman, right now, of course, we had an RFP that we put out for land proposals. We received 19 proposals back. We've gone through, we've evaluated those. We do have what we think is kind of our top five. We have not engaged the landowners in discussions at this point. I think where we end is when we get into the land discussions with the property owners. I hope that they come with a good reasonable price for property. We don't know what that's going to be or what the intent of that landowner is. The landowner may say, you know, we'd like to leave this in dedication of our family and name it after, and that'd be the best scenario for them to donate the land. I'm not sure that any of the proposals that we received are headed that direction, but I think once we get into those, I would think that administration would be back with council discussing our options, looking at the three or four, five proposals that we would look at price-wise. We can, from a Parks and Recreation Department, from a professional standpoint, tell you what is developable on that particular piece of property, because right now, you know, depending on a piece of property and what we get, we really can't tell you what we can develop on it. We know that we need additional athletic facilities. I could tell you that's one of the top priorities for us, which tells you that you really need some clear, flat, as much as possible, land. And that was one of the things that we've looked at when we evaluated those proposals. So, I know that Mr. Lyons has discussed those. I know that right after this budget is probably when he's, I'm not going to speak for him, but that's probably when he's going to call me and say, hey, let's get into this and tell me what you can do with this piece of property and what you can do with that piece of property. And then, I would think right after that, it would come back to the city council for consideration. And then, once we've gotten the property, then we can engage in talking about what do we need to do and facilities, meeting the needs of our citizens, what we need to build, et cetera. We go through a whole public engagement piece there to make sure that folks are giving their input, because, quite frankly, when you build a park, it's for a long, long time. And you look at the last, really, last park we built was Siegel. That was in 2005. That was almost 10 years ago, and Barfield was 15 years ago. So, you don't think of it being that far off, but, you know, you turn around twice and you're 10 or 15 years out. Mr. Lyons?
Fair summary. I would think later this month, we'll be sitting down with Parks and Rec to revisit the top five ranking. You know, we want to make sure we pick that up and if, you know, begin the conversation again with the Parks and Rec Commission and city council about what you want to do next. The money that was in the CIP really was for the land study. The funding to buy land, we don't have that yet. That's going to be something that we've got to come back to you. So, we've got both of those pieces coming to you about, you know, what we, our recommendation would be in terms of a potential location, and then what the cost might be, and then back to you for funding as well. So, we've got a couple more stops before we do anything.
Do we have any more questions for Mr. Gilwin? All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Very much. We'll move to the General Administrative Department. That's page 59.
We'll give you a quick summary of the general admin budget, which, as you know, houses the city manager's office, the mayor and council, and the finance department. Thirty-four employees. It's $4.6 million in the proposed budget, an increase of $282,000. Most of the increase this year is for the maintenance for the new software system in the finance department and pay increases. This budget also houses some costs for retiree medical expenses and retirement administration. That's, you know, $1.2 million between those two. When you look at our total budget, there certainly is a good amount of our expense that is for retirees. A couple of things we're looking to accomplish this year, as I mentioned earlier, is the year-to-plan, comprehensive plan, classification and compensation plan. We are working with the Municipal Technical Advisory Service and TASC to study a centralized building maintenance function. We're going to include money in the budget this year for a retreat for city council. We want to continue to reach out to the community and the finance department. We're going to remodel the finance department. That project is getting ready to get started. Implement the new ERP position, and then we're still recruiting our purchasing director. We've had an interview, continue to look for a candidate there, but in the upcoming year, we really look to centralize our purchasing and pick up some efficiencies there. There's also a recommendation for a new position, a new accountant. His rights department continues to do more and more, and would like to recommend a new accountant in their department as well. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, any questions for the city manager?
Mr. Lyons, I didn't see anything in here about the elevators, and I know we recently approved the elevators. Was that in last year's budget?
It's actually in the capital money that we borrowed.
Okay.
And Mr. Lyons will be glad to see that. I understand he got stuck.
I almost yelled second. Just, you know what I'm saying. Looking out for you.
Mr. Lyons, how are we putting the purchasing manager in the city structure, and then how will that be supervised and how would the budget be accounted for on that?
Sure. It'll be in the general admin budget, and I think at this point, we're going to have the position report directly to the city manager.
Okay. When do we feel like that will be in process?
I think we've got interviews set up.
We've got another batch of candidates. We've not received a large number of applications that met government experience, experience in Tennessee, other requirements that we felt were necessary, but we're still looking. We're still advertising.
Can I imagine starting a new department that, you have to get that right person in?
From the ground up. I mean, there is no predecessor. This will be completely defined by the person who accepts the role.
And you're in a fairly specialized area, if you will, for what you're looking for to do.
Because working with new software, which we're still trying to get online too, so we're hoping to get somebody to go hand-in-hand with the software project.
Sure. We certainly have seen the benefit when we brought Mr. Chris Lilly into the organization. Chris had a lot of experience in IT, and while we had very talented IT people in various city departments, Chris was able to build the team. And we're really looking for the same thing here, where we're going to have to centralize things that are being, happened in all the various city departments, and someone with that experience that can say, I've already seen how, what the goal line looks like, how, you know, develop the city system. So, while we're a little frustrated it's taken this long, we want to continue to work hard, find the right person.
Okay. Questions? All right. See, now we'll move to the IT, Information Technology Department. Mr. Lilly?
Nice segue, but Mr. Lyons provided a reminder.
Page 67, and I have to find the course on, page four for the salary schedule.
Good afternoon, Mayor McFarlane, council members. Just want to briefly discuss some of the goals that we had for fiscal year 2014, and then go into some of the ones that we have for 2015. We presented to you a master plan in fiscal year 2014. We planned the work. Now, it's time to work the plan. Our theme, we're kind of using the theme on, some of the theme on the cover of our budget soaring to new heights. From the IT master plan, just kind of going back over it briefly, the way we came up with the strategic planning of the plan, we used three different questions. Where are we today? Where do we want to go, want to be tomorrow? And how do we get there? If you remember, we came to you with the City 2.0, where we want to go, and we have a roadmap. And as we go down that roadmap, we've come to a, an area where we're at an implementation, implementation area, but we're still planning, we're still designing, we're at the designing phase, and of course, we'd like to implement as accurate as possible. Just look back on fiscal year 2014. We changed out all of the phones. Of course, you know, we had the, some old phones on our desk and that were very outdated. We had a hard time finding parts. Were able to switch it out with a newer phone, and it's helped with efficiency. And we're moving forward on learning all the features of the phone. It has a lot of features. We're learning that, and I think my whole staff is happy. We actually have extensions now that we can call different buildings and not have to call outside to get back inside of a city, another city office. So, that's been one of the big wins in 2014. We've also created different apps, and these were created in-house by the staff, one being the street paving app, where we're able to track the paving improvement process. Also, we've created some safety applications. I'm glad we haven't had to use them, but we've tested them several times. As a matter of fact, we, in IT, ran through a drill where we met up over at the EOC, and we worked through some of our disaster contingency and recovery, working on business continuity plans, and so we come up with follow-up and action items on how we would bring the city's software and data back up as soon as possible. We've come up with the fire assessment and storm shelter location apps, which aids the fire department in assessments after emergencies or storms. We're also still working on city-wide applications such as the Intranet. Several of you have seen Intranet, and the start of the Intranet, it is a work in progress, and we're taking it slow because we want to make sure that we do it right. But we will be, you will see improvements on the Intranet, and we'll be adding more, what they call web parts or actions and workflows to the Intranet. We've implemented an IT help desk. This help desk is a centralized, centrally managed help desk. We've taken on an additional head count to watch over this help desk, and the person we've taken has done a great job in developing processes, standard operating procedures, and also working with staff to make sure that they're up and running as soon as possible. And we've worked on these several areas. Now, the focus will be on our applications, network administration, and our acquisitions and implementations, the areas that we've circled, which are, if you can see them, the finance, management, human resources, working on implementation, disaster recovery, security, hardware and software. Those will be part of our fiscal year 2015 goals. Some of the projects that we'll be working on, actually, one was, we went live with our water and sewer billing system today with great success. We'll continue to work with water and sewer in making sure that we're able to roll out the different, the different intricacies and the improvements that we've made to the billing system, and that will enable our citizens to see more into their accounts and looking more into their accounts. And I think it's a great win, but that has actually checked off as they go live, and it was successful. We also have several others that we're planning for this year, which is finance, payroll, court information system, and human resources. Another big project is an operating system upgrade. April 8th of this year, Microsoft announced an end-of-life for Windows XP and also Windows 2003. Windows 2003 didn't affect us as much because we did go to Office 365 earlier, and we were able to upgrade the, our Microsoft Office products. But we have a lot of machines here still with Windows XP. What we did is we identified the one, the machines that were accessing other organizations that were labeled as critical, such as banks, and we upgraded those as soon as possible before the end-of-life date. We do have a lot of machines that still stand to be upgraded, and we'd like to complete the upgrade in the, in this fiscal year. But we've run across a roadblock. Several of our machines, our hardware, will not support a, an upgraded system. So, in the budget, you'll see where we're planning on PC replacement. In this PC replacement, what we've identified is we have machines that were, had reached end-of-life back in 2007, 2009, and we're still using them. And what's happening is the great staff that we have are finding ways to work around the failures in these systems because they're so old. And what we like to do is, what we've done is taken the line items from each department, brought them in to a centrally managed area, line item, to where we can get all of our machines on a five-year PC lifecycle. So, this initial purchase is pretty large because we do have a lot of machines that are very much outdated, but we'd like to, going forward, make sure that we do not get in this position again. Now, open for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lilly. Council members, if you have questions?
Mr. Lilly, you mentioned the court information system and updating it. Will that digitize the history of the old records, or is that something that would have to be done separately?
That's going to be done separately in our records management project, which will be after this project.
Okay. Is there a timing on that? Any rough idea how far that might be out?
There is a timing on it. I'd have to get back with you on that because I do have a timeline for that. We use the plan, define, design, implement approach, so it's on the roadmap, but I can get back with you on that.
The court system's like the finance system. It's on a COBOL application currently, so it's more important first to get us updated on our initial applications, and then we all hope to do more with record management.
And the record management's really an issue citywide. You know, the number of paper documents that we maintain, it really has pressed us for storage and locations to store documents, and so that's in phase two of the master plan, but we need that citywide. It definitely is a critical need.
Yeah, it's truly just a space saver is what it is, once we can start getting those hard files digitized. I mean, I'm not going to say it's going to offset the cost of it, but it would certainly go in the direction of generating space when we can digitize that information.
And one of the challenges in court, their record retention for some, you know, documents is we've always got to keep them. There's other things like payroll that we keep for seven years and then we can destroy, but there's a number of records in city court that we've always got to, you know, find a physical place to store.
Right. There is a portion to this system that has a content manager, content management section to where we'll be able to retain some, digitize some of the paperwork, but we will not be able, it won't digitize all of it. It won't be our overall solution.
I did want to underline one thing that Chris had mentioned on the PC replacement. While that looks like a larger number, what's happened in past budgets is they've been spread around the various city departments because we've had to replace computers. So, we went through all the individual requests and centrally located them here. We want to be able to track that better and by putting it in one spot. So, while that number looks a little bit bigger, it's not necessarily starting from zero. Every year, we've had computer replacements, but we think this will give us a better opportunity to keep an eye on it.
But this is actually the replacements. Now, if there's a new position with a new computer, you may still see some of those in the budget, so I don't want you to be confused if you still see a few, but this is for the replacements of existing computers.
Ms. Lilly, what's a smart board?
A smart board is, it's a board where you're able to present, you're able to actually touch it. If you've seen our smart Aquas board that we use for the bridge over Broad in the Rotunda, we kind of broad... we kind of brought the video up. We're able to, well, if you watch news now, they're using it a lot on the news, where they're able to actually touch the board and it interacts with the computer in the back and allows them to manipulate the screen so that it can give you better views. You're able to run presentations just by touching the screen.
And you'll see it listed as loaner. While that's a great technology, we're using one currently in the planning department. We didn't want to see a situation where every department was asking for one. So we're going to recommend to budget it in the IT department. When a department needs it, they can call IT and we'll get it out to them.
We first started using one in the planning department as a loaner and found out that there was a big opportunity to have one there full-time. As a matter of fact, the planning director uses it 100% of the time. And it's really helped out with some of the projects that he's been working on. And what we've realized is that there's a need in other departments to use one. So we'd like to get one that we can loan out.
Is that what some of the teachers have been writing grants for and are using in this classroom now, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I've seen that. That's fabulous. Interesting.
Chris, what is the consultant line there? I just noticed it's a big jump.
The consultant line is we're implementing major enterprise-wide software. And we're talking about general ledgers. We're talking about interfacing, taking what we have in an old antiquated system where the backend is all over the place and putting it into another system. And what we're looking at is getting a consultant, hiring a consultant to manage that project because it is a big project. We had it done with the CIS system and it did help in the success in planning of implementing the new CIS system. And since we're doing so many at one time, we really think it's advantageous to add that to this project as well.
It sounds like the technology is needed. Is that a pretty reasonable number? I mean, do we think that's going to cover it or is that a guess or bids? Or do you know that's pretty solid?
That's pretty solid. Yeah, we've been working on that for a while and whittling it down and making sure that we're going to be very efficient with it. We're using, for other areas such as change management, such as coming up with best practices, we're going to use internal employees for that. But for the project management, we feel it's in our best interest to have someone 100% on that.
Well, I congratulated Mr. Gore on the successful launch of CIS today with Mr. Lilly's significant help. He said without a doubt, having the right project manager was critical to the success.
These are the people that set the blueprint, the blueprint for what you're going to do with CIS and finance and all that kind of good stuff.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, it's normal management 101. You know, these consultants in here, they set the blueprint along with your folks. Working with them, it's a huge task.
One thing I'd like to commend you on that, you know, I don't think you would mind me saying this. Bob Parks was speaking to a group one time and he said that, you know, I kept telling the lady who works with me that computers, it's a fad, they're going to go away. And I think that we now see this is not going anywhere. And so as opposed to having to spend $136,000 on new computers in one year, that we now can budget this out to where we're not having to do it on a yearly basis. And I would recommend that we look at doing that system-wide on software, whatever that we have that as we see upgrades that come along, that we don't wait, that we can budget those out so we stay ahead of the game, which I think you've done a great job getting us to where we were running last in the race. And you're catching us up to where we're running first, so you're doing a great job.
And there are big numbers because we're trying to catch up. But I see a big opportunity for savings in staying up.
And I know Ms. Rice is really ready for a new program and all of the things that are going to go along with operating two systems at one time and looking forward to that.
We are looking forward to that.
Just with Mr. Washington, you made a comment about the project manager and that, you know, on our team. That's also another area that we're looking at. We're looking at adding a staff member, an IT systems analyst, to aid in the technical project management because that is a totally, that's a different piece. It's someone who's skilled in knowing what the backend looks like, knowing how to manipulate it and make them interface from our old, which is an art, from COBOL to our new system, which will be a SQL-based backend. This person will also be sitting in on all trainings, making sure that they become a specialist in all areas of the new software and helping our staff to be trained and know the new processes that it will take to complete the tasks that they're completing today.
Chris, I think something that, and I'm going to put you on the spot, but something that you may could put on your list and, you know, we have an app for all different things, it looks like, but it may be good to have a city council app that we could easily go through when we're out with customers or we're out with residents and they give us a complaint that we easily can click to what department it's supposed to go to. And it automatically does that when we're with residents. And so that would go to the city manager and much like what we have on the website already. But we could do that as council members and easily filter through. And it may be something that would be a good, something to think about.
That's a good idea.
So.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for the IT department?
Chris, I just want to compliment you on what a fine job you're doing as far as trying to. I know a lot of these things, when we look at them, look like it's for the benefit of our employees or maybe the council or information gathering and stuff. But so much of this does trickle all the way down to the citizens of Murfreesboro and the online bill-paying processes and the credit card abilities and stuff that you've improved in the last year so much have been very advantageous to every citizen of Murfreesboro. So thank you very much. I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you, Mr. Smollett.
All right. We'll move to the communications department. Mr. Bozeman, good seeing you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Communication Department is responsible for proactively providing accurate and timely city information to a wide array of city stakeholders to enhance the public awareness of city programs, services, initiatives and projects, increase civic participation and engagement, and communicate city policy and promote transparency. The department disseminates the city information by utilizing city TV, the city website, social media, news releases, and through our media relations. Additionally, the department is responsible for internal communications, providing training and communication videos with employees. We also assist citizens in resolving Comcast cable TV complaints and issues that they have. We also staff and work with the Murfreesboro Cable Television Commission in overseeing and enforcing the local cable television franchise and the policies of the operation of city TV. Some of the compliment during fiscal year 2014 from the department, we created and now maintain the city's main Twitter account, has almost 700 followers now. Also, we had over 68,000 views of our online videos that are available on the city's website and also on the city's YouTube channel. We have over 2,200 followers on the city's main Facebook page, over a million visits to the city's website. And also, the department received some national government television awards over this past year for programming excellence for the State of the City program that we do and also a documentary on the Stone River National Battlefield. This upcoming fiscal year 2015 budget, some of the department's goals are to continue to inform and engage the community utilizing the communication tools that we have. And also, we're looking at hiring an audio/video consultant engineer this year to help us design an HD facility to upgrade for city TV. It's been 10 years since we last upgraded the station from analog to digital. And during that time, we also added the robotic cameras we have in the council chambers. So we're looking at now to kind of bring it up into the HD environment. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the department's budget.
Okay. Any questions?
How come, what's the legal cost? It's going from $1,000 to $10,000 outside legal cost?
Actually, I think that was part of the franchise fee audit we were looking at doing and that was taken out. So maybe that should be correct. I didn't notice that until just now. But there was in the budget for a franchise fee audit review and it kind of coincided with that. So that probably should be looked at being reduced because I think we've decided to postpone that.
Okay. We just took care of your smart board, Mr. Lilly, wherever you are. Thank you. Mr. Bozeman. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Mr. Bozeman, thank you very much. We'll move to the legal department. 79 and we are, we're at page five on the salary budget, salary page.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, members of the council. As you know, the city legal department exists to provide legal advice and advice to the city so that the city council, city administration, city departments can achieve their goal in legally correct and legally prudent manner in communication with the city schools and the electric department receive services from the legal department. I think our success is best measured by the fact that you don't have to see or hear from me talking about legal problems very often. And we want to keep it that way, like the duck, smooth on the surface and paddling very vigorously below what's obvious. The budget that we've presented to you is fairly vanilla. There are no changes in personnel or major expenses. And so we believe it to be an appropriate one. Let me pause there and see if there are any questions about the legal department budget before I address the risk management budget. Okay. Hearing none. The risk management budget is on page 234. As you know, it is a separate fund that exists to provide independent financial structure for the risks that the city commercially and self-insures. The risk management revenues reflect self-assessed premiums that different funds and departments are charged to cover workers' compensation and other exposures. The risk management office within the legal department consists of three personnel, our risk manager, our safety director and our claims person. There are no changes proposed in staffing or in significant structural financings for the risk management fund. We always aim to have the minimal amount of premium charged that we need to cover our reserve requirements and base those charges based on what experience has been in the particular departments, which is why when you look at budgets for different departments, you may see swings in amounts in the workers' comp cost. It's based on their experience as well as what the state statistics indicate are going to be the probable costs based on the kind of work that is being done by the employees in that department. You know, firefighters are different from secretarial support personnel. So that fund has a lot of its financial work done by the finance department because of the intra-fund transfers. But I would be happy to answer any questions and to call upon Melissa Aaron, who explained the complicated big numbers.
Okay. Any questions on legal or risk management? Okay. Ms. McGinnan, thank you very much. We'll move to the judicial department. Judge Sellers?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good to see you.
Councilmembers, fellow city officers. The judicial department budget begins on page 88. The city court, as you know, operates court sessions on Tuesdays and Thursdays of every week. We have a session at 8:15 in the morning, at 10:00 in the morning, at 3:00 in the afternoon. Once a month, we have a codes docket where we deal with housing and zoning code violations. And twice a month, at 7:00 PM at night, we have continued the implementation of the pilot project for night court and continue to analyze that program. As far as highlights, in our last year, we did fully implement the payment of citations online and by credit card. We have beefed up our court security and appreciate the support of council and the police department. We now have a court security officer in every court session, a sworn police officer who has been trained in court security, which we find to be very helpful. We also, last year, you'll remember, rebuilt the city court clerk's front counter and made that much more secure for the clerks as well as the public. And we now have new video security cameras in the, not only in the clerk's office, in front of and behind the counter, but also for the first time in the courtroom itself. So we feel very, very good about how we can protect our citizens who are and need to appear in city court. Nothing really outstanding in the budget as far as new items. We are seeking a copier to replace an eight-year-old unit that we have been sharing with the communication department. That last copier was purchased from the communication department budget. And so Mr. Bozeman thought it was my turn to buy the next copier. So that's about all we have, other than an increase you'll see there for the software maintenance required for our new court management software. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions?
We can find the revenue in the revenue portion of the general fund, I guess.
Yes, sir.
From court fines.
Judge, I was asking a little while ago about the digitizing of your records. Would you convey to me the importance of why we need to digitize those?
Well, they're overtaking the office and numerous storage areas that we have around the city parking garage. We have to maintain those records. We cannot destroy them. We cannot not keep them. A lot of departments, as was mentioned, have to keep files for some seven years and then they can destroy them. We have to keep ours forever. We have really two requirements. We have to keep the original court records and then we have to create a court docket that contains all of the information about those records, each individual case. And so it's very important and I'm very excited about the opportunity in the future to be able to digitize those old records. We can then shred them and save all of that, all of that space we're using now to store them.
Great. Okay. Any other questions?
Judge, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move to the solid waste department, page 190 in your budget.
Well, it's still afternoon, Mayor and council, so good evening. And I'm Joey Smith.
Well, it's still afternoon, Mayor and council, so good evening, and I'm Joey Smith, the solid waste department, and our business is always picking up. And at this time of year, the limbs and brush are out there. But I think last year, we picked up from the citizens and residents of Murfreesboro over thirty-four thousand, five hundred something tons, and picked up and hogged and mulched a little over thirty-two thousand tons of mulch. And starting in March, the first Monday of March, we gave out a little over ninety-five hundred cubic yards of our double-grind mulch. And right now, we have been... we have set aside that the parts and recs been using to spruce up for the spring fling and other little parts that they've been using over at Barfield and certain other areas. And each year, we participate with Rutherford County and the state of Tennessee having a hazardous waste roundup, and that's generally on the open weekend in November between the Tennessee ballgame and the LSU ballgame. So that area is going to be November the second. I've already got that down on my calendar, so I know exactly where I'll be.
When's Auburn play?
Auburn game's November the twenty-eighth.
And who won the Alabama-Auburn game last year?
Unfortunately, as my father-in-law asked me, he says, "You got a second?" And I said, "Yes, sir, we did, nineteen-twenty-seven." I don't think y'all got y'alls till about two thousand and ten, so. But as you can see, our budget this year has... looks like we're pretty much standard. Actually, went down a little bit, almost fifty thousand dollars from last year. A lot of that's going to be due to the fuel price. And even though it's just going to be maintained steady, though I watch it very closely every day, because I'm the one that actually has to make the fuel projections, so I just have to try to take in a lot of different factors. And so far, been pretty well, pretty correct. But I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmembers, any questions for Mr. Smith?
I want to say, Mr. Smith, that I don't think any community in the state picks up its leaves and trash and leaves and yard waste as efficiently and as often as we do. I know Metro does it once a quarter, and we do it once every ten or eleven days. That's a compliment.
Well, I would... yes, sir. Thank you. I've been flamed enough on it, so, yes, sir.
There's no football question in there.
No, sir. But you have to realize, though, the guys really do work very hard. They come out there and they're... and it has made a difference, even though we like to pride ourselves that we sort of know our way around town. Today, you know, when you listen to them on the radio and you've had a... we've had an accident out on Memorial, and they sort of blocked Memorial. And on our Monday's runs, you know, a lot of them come out and through, so we're having the guys direct so that we could go Rutherford all the way around, or Norfield to the landfill, or just different areas. It does make a big difference in being able to have those guys be able to communicate to each other on our radio system, just so that we can continue doing that. Plus, it's always adventurous the first week of school being out, because you realize who actually is the ones that put the garbage out. When you get the phone calls, "Well, we didn't realize that they came at this time," and, you know, normally our son puts it out, or our daughter puts it out when they're at school, so let's just say that you go backwards and forwards at this time. The first couple of weeks when school's out, we're sort of backtracking a little bit. It's almost like when we're having to retrain the college kids, when they'll be hitting us in full force here about the first week of August.
Joey, I know you basically determined the economic recovery by the metric ton, I guess. How is our garbage pickup as far as... is it continuing to increase as...
It actually increased last year from the previous year by a little over about twelve-hundred tons. We were thirty-three to thirty-four. If you... and talking to my counterpart in Rutherford County, theirs increased a little bit, you know, from their convenience center stuff, it has increased too. So as far as the growth rate, and I do not have the numbers, but I know that last year we delivered a little over five hundred new carts to businesses in new homes. And when I say that's to brand-new residents there, so whether it be a house that's been on the market for a while, hasn't sold, or to a new business that's opened up into a new area, those are where we've actually put those carts at. And so it has creeped up. It hasn't... we're still averaging roughly about forty-five pounds, you know, forty-five to forty-seven pounds per household, and it just varies on just the different days.
Thank you.
Mr. Smithman's question is a good reminder to remember to take a look at the appendix. Mr. Crumley worked hard with our city departments on the benchmarking data with MTS. And so is, you know, for instance, on solid waste, on page two seventy-five, you can see some comparisons of how efficient our solid waste department is compared to our peers in Tennessee. For instance, one of the measures is it shows that Murfreesboro had the second lowest cost per capita, and we were sixty-seven percent of the state average in terms of our collection costs. So we've got some good data in the back of this. I think before we finish up budget presentation, Mr. Crumley's going to hit some of the high points on the benchmarking data for all the city departments, but we are trying to keep track of how we're doing compared to some others.
Mr. Smith, are we noticing through town that some of our older trucks are the brown trucks, and it looks like the newer trucks are our blue trucks? Is that the direction we're headed on the color of our trucks?
Oh, yes, sir. The Murfreesboro blue on the front and the white. And I made sure that when we did that color scheme, that I had it approved by Mr. Jim and Shannon, because I am completely colorblind, and I did not want anybody to set me up, because if I knew if something ever happened, that it was the wrong color, I would not be standing right here tonight. So, you know, because it's black and white to me, you know, or light gray, so I'm sorry, but, you know.
He'd have found a way to get crimson in there somehow.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Smith? All right, before we hit insurance, let's take a five-minute recess. Okay. We'll go ahead and get back to the budget, and we'll consider insurance. It's in the supplemental binder section of the insurance tab, page two thirty-one. Ms. Russell?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to talk to you this evening about health insurance benefits, and I want you to know that we heard what you said in the last council meeting, and we heard what you said in the one-on-one meetings when we talked about benefit plan design. And we understood that one of your main concerns were employees and having to come up with the deductible for the diagnostic and labs. And we got with our consultants Cowen Benefits, and we think we have a solution for that. We are going to recommend, instead of deductible and coinsurance for labs and diagnostics for employees to pay, coinsurance only. And we think that that will help the employees. That coupled with us moving to Blue Cross Blue Shield and no changes in the HRA premiums, no changes in the PPO Medicare retiree premiums, we think that all of that will be a benefit. Jay with Cowen's going to come up and do a recap of the one-on-ones that we met with you guys on, and then I'll come up and make recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Jay with Cowen, and we're really here to kind of present a few things for you guys. I don't know why it's not coming up there. There we go. We met with a lot of you guys one-on-one to kind of go over really an overview of the plan design. We also wanted to touch on some of the plans that you have available, some national averages, kind of give you some benchmark information of how the city plan compares to other entities across the state and country, and then review some of the highlights of the benefits and where we see the plan going into the future. And so, as Ms. Russell said, we did listen from the one-on-ones in the meetings last time. We are recommending a change that I think is going to be very beneficial to the employees. We're very excited about what we have to offer the employees in the fall. I think we've worked really hard with the HR department, the city manager and city attorneys to go through everything. And really, what we wanted to do this evening is just kind of go through a little overview of the plans that are offered. You have two benefits that we offer today under the health plan. One's called an HRA, a Health Reimbursement Arrangement Plan, and then the other's a PPO plan. And really, with the HRA, there's a risk-reward to both of these plans, as we've kind of talked about in the past. The reward of the HRA is there's lower contributions, so what they're paying out of their paycheck is lower from the HRA. However, the risk, as we mentioned before, too, is a higher out-of-pocket. So when they go for services at time of service under the HRA, the out-of-pocket cost could be higher than the HRA plan. But with that plan, what we offer is what we're calling a soft landing, where the city does offer a reimbursement to the HRA, which I'll show a little bit later, but for singles, they receive seven hundred and fifty dollars; families receive fifteen hundred dollars to help them towards that deductible and out-of-pocket. So really, when we've looked at this in the past, if you have a minimum cost, a medium cost of your family budget and healthcare expenses, the HRA may be a good option for you. And I've got an example to kind of show you of how we've walked through that here in a couple minutes. Another thing we looked at for last year, employees in the HRA spent only about 1.4% of the members met their out-of-pocket. So as we're looking at this, that was a big discussion we've had in the past, is how many members are actually meeting that worst-case scenario? And under the HRA plan, it's about 1.4% of the members. And then, as you look on the next slide at the bottom there, about 6.1% of the members met that out-of-pocket cost in the PPO plan. Kind of the risk-reward of the PPO, when we look at that plan, it's the reverse. The reward is if you select the PPO plan, you have a lower deductible and out-of-pocket. So at time of service, typically, you would pay less for those deductible and out-of-pocket expenses. However, the risk of that plan is you are guaranteed to pay more in premium. So what's coming out of your pocket on a per-paycheck cycle would be more. And so when we've looked at that, really, from an employee's perspective, if you have a member that is guaranteed to meet their out-of-pocket, or they really feel they're going to meet their out-of-pocket in a given year, then the PPO may be a better option for them. However, when we've looked at it, like I said earlier, on this plan, only about 6.1% of the actual members met their out-of-pocket. And so that's something we really want to focus on this year, is explaining the difference in the cost that's coming out of their paycheck and that worst-case out-of-pocket scenario and the benefits, and then actually, how many members are meeting that out-of-pocket in a given year, and kind of give them a little bit of that information. One thing we did touch on in this last meeting when we were working with everyone is that when we look at the plans from a Cowen Benefits perspective, we really don't see that the current HRA plan is a true consumerism benefit. And as you see our three-year strategy here in a few minutes, you'll see that we want to get more towards the employee being more engaged in their benefit selection in future years. And really, what we mean by that, when we look at the side-by-side comparison of these two plans, if you look at it today, really, the only difference between the plan is the deductible and the out-of-pocket. And really, when that comes into play, is when an employee goes to an inpatient or outpatient facility, some of the labs and x-rays, which we're looking at changing that benefit today to be a richer option for the member, but really, on a day-to-day basis, when they're going to the doctor's office, when they're going to get their prescriptions filled, when they're going to the emergency room, these two plans act exactly the same. The office visit co-pay for an office visit is twenty dollars for primary care, twenty-five dollars for specialists. You can see on the next slide, their prescription costs are the same. So we want to make sure we get that point across, as the plan is today, for most of the members within the city plan, day-to-day expenses are the same, but one plan does cost more out of your paycheck than the other. So it's really, when you look back, how many times in the past several years have I met my deductible and out-of-pocket? And we want to kind of give them that information of how many overall in the city have met that in the last year or so. And then what we put together really is that financial exhibit that I've shared with most of you, really showing kind of the numbers. So as I said earlier, you know, want to look at the financials, take some of the emotion part of that, but look at the numbers, and I know the numbers are kind of small, but you get... most of you have seen this, when we look at what's guaranteed to come out of their paycheck between the PPO and the HRA, what's coming out of their payroll deductions, when you look at that difference, on average, an employee is spending about three hundred and ninety-six dollars more per year for the PPO plan; a family is spending around twelve hundred and seventy-four dollars. That's guaranteed. And then when we kind of take it down to that second level, we also mentioned earlier that the city does give employees money towards their deductible in the form of seven hundred and fifty dollars for singles, and then up to fifteen hundred dollars for employees with dependents under the plan to go towards the deductible. And so when you add those savings that are guaranteed out of their paycheck with what the city provides them, and we kind of compare that over to the far right of, well, what is my worst-case scenario? Under the PPO plan, it's your out-of-pocket, which is fifteen hundred dollars for single or three thousand for family. For the HRA, it's three thousand for single and six thousand, so it's double. But that difference between the two is kind of those last two columns. Worst-case scenario, if you're in the HRA plan, you're going to potentially spend fifteen hundred dollars more at time of service for single, three thousand for family. But if you save the money out of your paycheck and you combine it with what the city gives you in contributions, bottom line is that last category. If you go to the HRA plan, you have a horrible plan, a horrible year, that plan year, then at most, a single person's going to spend about three hundred and fifty-three dollars more than they would have in the PPO plan, and for a family, it's around two twenty-five. And so that's where we're saying, if you know you're going to meet your out-of-pocket or deductible, then probably the PPO's plan's a better option for you. But for a lot of the employees in the city that we know aren't meeting their out-of-pocket, we want to give them some additional tools, in addition to what we've given in the past, to kind of show them some of these numbers. And really, one of the reasons we haven't shown this exhibit in the past is this year we are working to spread the difference between the PPO and the HRA, so that the cost difference is a little bit, and that's why we're suggesting a no increase to the HRA plan this year, and then an increase to the PPO, and that'll spread that difference so that there is a little bit more margin there. And so we want to definitely be sure to include that in our presentation. A couple more slides, and then, you know, you can ask any questions. But really, the next one is just kind of recapping a couple things that we want to make sure we mention. In addition to there not being a proposed increase to the HRA plan, and I believe a 12% increase to the PPO, if you achieved your wellness goals this year, as part of the wellness funds, you'll receive forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents per month in a wellness credit. It averages out to be about five hundred dollars for the year. So essentially, any employee in the city, whether they have single coverage, family coverage, whether in the HRA or PPO plan, their cost out of their paycheck for healthcare costs will go down if they achieve their benefits this year, based on the results in the wellness. Another opportunity we want to make sure we tell them about is this year, they do have the ability to put in as much as twenty-five hundred dollars in a flexible spending account. So if they have expenses they know about that would exceed what the city would give them in the HRA funds, or even if they're in the PPO plan, we want to make sure they know that they can put that money in on a pre-tax benefit. And we are offering a new vendor this year, will that make it easier for employees to receive those funds out of the account? And then on top of that, legislation has changed the policy this year where they can roll over as much as five hundred dollars. So in the past, where we would say, if you have money in the flexible spending account, it's a use it or lose it, you better use your money or you're going to lose it, and that was a deterrent for a lot of people. Now, the IRS code allows for them to roll over up to five hundred dollars into that plan. So we want to make sure they know those couple things are available as well. Just real quick, a couple benchmarking things that we thought would be helpful, because we know a lot of times if you change the deductible, or if you change the employee contributions, you know, employees don't always know where they fall with other municipalities or other employers. So we are considering putting some of this information in the annual enrollment communication this year. And this one here really shows employee contributions as it stands right now. So we did some benchmarking through the Kaiser Family Fund Foundation to show, really, the third section is the City of Murfreesboro PPO Plan. That's the one most in line with the other entities. But you look at large employers, government entities, employers in the South, on average, the cost for single coverage is in blue. It's around $100, $100 to $114. The city is right in line with that at 106 for that comparable plan. For family coverage, the city's at 339 currently. That's in line, if not lower, than most of the other benchmark averages we were looking at. From a deductible perspective, you know, we looked at the deductible as well. The city is right in line with a $500 deductible as the richest plan or the lowest deductible plan, $1,000 for family. We do see that you guys offer a choice. So if employees want to pay less, we do offer the HRA. But the PPO plan is in line with others. And then one of the enhancements we see is in the out-of-pocket. And this is the main one I would look at, too, is that what's the worst-case scenario? And when you look here, the city actually lines up better. You actually have a lower out-of-pocket at $1,500 for single, $3,000 for family. And that's quite a bit less than all three of the other benchmarks that we were looking at. So that's one thing we do want to point out, is that if you're in the HRA plan, there's no increase. If you participate in the wellness, you're going to see a decrease. As far as our plan design, it stacks up well with others, and we're not recommending increasing deductibles or co-pays like a lot of our other clients that we work with this year. So honestly, we're pretty excited about the message you guys are going to be able to send to the employees come this fall. As Ms. Russell said, we did listen from the last meeting and some one-on-ones. We've gone back and looked at some of the information, and we do agree that the increase in the diagnostic lab and x-ray to a coinsurance. So essentially, what we also realized is we understand where employees are coming from when they said they're paying first-dollar coverage for the lab and x-ray. Essentially, we said, well, no, it's deductible and coinsurance. But we also know that a very small percentage of the city employees are meeting their deductible. And so what that means is when they are going in, they are paying the first dollar of that cost. And so what we're suggesting is changing that benefit to subject to the coinsurance with no deductible. So that means right off the bat, whether they've met their deductible or not, they only have to pay 20% of that cost, and then the insurance company pays the 80%. Now, that does raise the budget. I mean, we did have to increase the budget about one percentage point, so that does raise their employee contributions a little bit in the city budget. But we think that will be something I believe the employees are going to appreciate as we look at that. So that is the recommendation, is to make that one plan design change, and that will be an enhancement to the plan. The last couple of slides, and I believe we're through. And this one's really just an overview, so I'd like to end on some positives. But this is really the message that we would be leading with, with the employees in the fall, is, you know, good news, we are moving to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee for the medical. They did come back with significant savings and discounts, so that was a positive. There's no plan design changes, with the exception of this one enhancement that I just mentioned. If you're in the HRA or the PPO retiree plan, the cost increase is zero. The PPO plan did see an increase, but if you participate in the wellness program and you meet your goals, then you're also going to see a decrease. And then the last thing is, we do want to be sure to show them that the city benefits and contributions are in line with other municipalities, large employers, employers in the South, just so they have that information handy. The last couple of things here is, we want to show mainly for this meeting, is that the focus this year will be on education, the HRA plan. We do look at today, when we look at your renewal increases each year, the trend that we're seeing is about an 8.5% trend level, based on the participation you have today in the HRA plan and the PPO plan. If everybody was in a traditional PPO plan, we would expect that cost to increase at about a 9% to 10% each year. If we had everybody in the HRA plan, and the consumerism components were in there a little bit differently, we're going to talk about in a second, we would see that trend bend closer to around 6%. And so what we're really trying to accomplish over the next couple of years is to educate and make changes to the cost, to the plan, to encourage more utilization in the HRA plan, to lower the trend level. And so really, what that means is, even though we're not seeing a big difference this year, if we project that all the way out to 2019, 2020, at those different trend levels, the difference between having people in a PPO and an HRA, based on your claims, as they are today, that difference is almost $3.5 million. So that's the benefit. And really, what that is, is employees changing their behaviors. So they're not going to the doctor's offices often, maybe they're using generic prescriptions instead of brand-name prescriptions, things like those, changes employees would make by being in a consumerism HRA plan. That's what we're talking about, is over the next five years. That difference in that year could be as much as $3.5 million. So that's the slide there. The last thing is that the steps we're trying to make, as far as the three-year strategy to get there, back in 2013, you guys implemented the HRA concept to the city plan. This year, we are proposing spreading those rates, the employee contributions, to also encourage more consideration in the HRA plan. And then next year, what we really want to propose is really changing some of the plan design of the HRA, to make it a more consumerism-driven plan that will really affect the employees how they use the benefit. And what that means is, we want to really change like the office visits and the prescription plans, more to a coinsurance versus a co-pay. And so like I led off earlier, the co-pays are the same between the two plans. We really want to make it where it's a coinsurance, so the employees actually do have a little more skin in the game under the HRA. But also, by doing that, the employees will be able to use their $750 or their $1,500 for office visits and prescriptions, where they can't today. They're having to pay that out of their pocket, because it doesn't go towards the deductible. So that'll be a new component we want to add into there next year. And that'll be what we'll be proposing for 2016. The last slide on wellness, just gives you a couple things. We're going to continue to use interactive health as our recommendation for this year for the screenings and the materials for engagement. The cost for that program's $195 per evaluation, paid entirely by the city. We're projecting about 815 members will receive the evaluation this year. I believe that's a 20% increase over last year, and that cost will be about $158,000. And then we are this year giving the reward, the $500 reward. We expect to have to pay that out for about 428 people that will achieve their goals, and that'll accumulate to around $214,000. All right. That was a quick overview, because I know a lot of you have heard most of that presentation before, but we definitely want to take the opportunity to kind of go through that with you. And I believe Ms. Russell's going to come up and just finish off the budget part unless you, unless you have any questions on that presentation.
Let's, before Ms. Russell comes up, do you have any questions regarding the Cowan presentation?
Mayor, I want to just make the comment that we need to make sure that our employees understand this. This is Chinese arithmetic to a lot of people. And me, and I think it's sometimes hard to understand, coinsurance versus co-pay, the things that are confusing to people, that some are more confused than others. And I think we need to make sure that we have a very good understanding, because I think it is an upgrade. Blue Cross Blue Shield is, seems to be the premier provider in the industry, at least in this part of the country. But I just want to make sure that we do everything possible to make sure that our employees understand this. Very good.
Ms. Allen.
Yeah, just want to make sure, you know, when those slides come up with the benchmarks, did you guys take some measures to make sure that, you know, we're comparing apples to apples as far as their schedule of, you know, of coverage? You know, if that national average, did it include diagnostics or not? Or was it an 80/20 or a 100 or, I mean, how do you know when we just look at what our costs are, what our deductible is, whether or not that really is our plan versus their plan?
Right. And what we do, it's the Kaiser Family Foundation, so it does benchmark several, a couple hundred thousand employers across the country. And so the way I look at it, to answer your question, the deductible's pretty easy to see. Really, that one is the example of what is an average deductible? And that, and we have multiple parameters. The one we pulled out was government entities, employers in the South, and then larger employers like you guys, 1,000 to 5,000. And so when you look at that one, it says the average deductible for those industries, almost all of them are across the board, the same. It was $500 for single, $1,000 for family. So that's what the average plan design is. The average out-of-pocket, it says, for those same categories, it varies from, you know, $2,000 to $2,500. And so the way we look at that, that's kind of what their average plan design is. So then when you say, all right, well, what's cost? Cost is based on an average of those type plans.
Well, the schedule of coverage, you know, what you cover inside of those plans is the part that I'm saying is an X-factor. So I didn't see is there's a, you know, what our insurance covers versus what the national average covers. You know, so I see those two things. If we don't pay for anything, it doesn't matter what the deductible is, or it doesn't matter what the premium is, if we don't cover anything, right? So I mean, there's got to be some level. I'm just trying to understand, you know, did we take some measures to make sure that we're looking at similar plans? And I, so I guess I suppose, I just want to make sure we're covering what those things, what those plans cover that we see on the slide.
Yeah, we actually prepared a whole benchmarking presentation and just pulled out these three after our one-on-ones that, you know, we're trying to explain the HRA. It usually is deductible, coinsurance, and out-of-pocket, and cost. But in our actual presentation on the benchmarking, it had co-pays in there, it also had prescription drug coverage. So it did take a little bit deeper dive into some of those other areas, so we can make that available to you guys. So you can say, well, how's our office visits and co-pays compare, specialist or generic drugs? It's in our normal, our other benchmarking one, so we could be sure you guys get a copy of that.
Just a general answer, if you know, is there, are we in line? I guess is maybe how I should have asked it. Are we in line with our schedule of coverage based on national average, South average, number of employees, you know, those same benchmarks that you put up there? I guess I'd just like to know.
We think when an employee looks at their benefit package, the three things we showed you are typically the three things they look at. The only other exception would be office visits and prescriptions. And I'm looking at the office visit one right here, the average is $25.40 for specialist. You guys are 25, or 20 and 25, so you're better. Prescriptions, on average, are 10, 30, 50. You're at 10, 30, 50. So just to answer your question, prescriptions, you're right in line. Office visits, you're better. Out-of-pocket, you're better. Deductible, you're in line. Coinsurance, you're in line. So if you're just saying one answer, I would say overall, your richer plan at the same cost or lower than your competitors.
Well, what we cover in our plan is what I'm asking, really.
To what level?
You know, the diagnostics piece, I'm learning here, so excuse me, but, you know, for, let's just say we didn't cover diagnostics at all in our insurance, okay? But the national average covered diagnostics at 100% for that level of deductible.
Right.
Those two things don't, aren't really apples to apples in my mind. Am I off base? I mean, that's, so I'm just trying to make sure our schedule of coverage matches up to schedule of coverage in other similar organizations. That's what I'm asking.
Right.
Not the deductible or any of that, the schedule of coverage. So what we cover, is that?
Yeah, and I think most, all insurance companies kind of derive what they cover as far as covered services. I mean, this is one that seems to be, I mean, your plan, your employees seem to use the lab and x-ray higher. I mean, we've looked at benchmarking with your price carrier, TPA, and the plan is higher. But we looked at it, too, you did cover it at 100% a couple of years ago, so it was a, there was no skin in the game to the member. And so, you know, I think we kind of went the other way, it said it's going to be deductible and coinsurance, and that was, and we did see a drop. We saw a pretty significant drop in utilization. But we're also now starting to hear the complaints that the employees are paying more out of their pocket. I mean, I think that seems to be the hot-button topic. So honestly, most plans are one or the other. It's either covered at 100% or deductible and coinsurance. And so you've had both of those, and we've heard, you know, overutilization and complaints from employees. So it was our recommendation to kind of meet the middle. That's not the standard. I mean, honestly, if you're, is that standard plan? That's non-standard, but I think it's a good middle ground that doesn't, I mean, the budget would have to increase three or four points to do the other, but we're trying to give something to the employees, too. But other stuff, I mean, those are the main things. You can go in the weeds on, you know, a lot of the details of the plan, but I think all the things I've mentioned are the ones employees look at as far as how the plans are covered.
Will you give us some examples on diagnostic lab and x-ray? Some examples of, we know, I think, some of the things that were not covered this past year. Will you give us some examples of the things that now would be covered?
Yeah, I think the problem has been, is the same things are going to be covered. The issue is, most of your members aren't meeting their deductible, which is a good thing.
Sure.
And so now, when they go in to get an MRI or a CAT scan, that may cost $1,500. If you're in that PPO plan, you had to pay $500 out of your pocket, and then 20% of the cost, which would still be, you know, if you do the math, that could be $800. Now, they're going to, right off the bat, only have to pay 20% of that cost, and so that's really going to cut it in half. And that's a big one. I mean, the lab work, I mean, I think one of the complaints I would see with that is if I go to the doctor and get my annual exam, and then I have to go get some lab and x-ray for work. You think that's your co-pay, but when you go to lab and x-ray, and they're doing other things outside of your annual exam, then you're going to have to pay your co-pay and lab, lab work. And I think that's a, I mean, that could be a couple hundred dollars.
So an example we've been given is, you know, we're pushing consumerism, and we want our employees that, when they are sick, to go to the doctor. And if there is other things that need to be done for the employee to be able to better their health, which in turn saves the city money, we want to be preventative and catch things before it happens.
Right.
So say that someone goes in, they get an EKG, something comes back abnormal, and we send, the doctor says, I don't feel quite comfortable with that. I want to get a stress test just to make sure. That has not been covered. So would that be covered now?
If it was not covered before, it wouldn't be covered now.
When I say it wasn't covered, I don't mean to use that.
It would be, if they hadn't met their deductible, I mean, if they would have met their deductible already, then they would pay 20, it would be exactly the same. They would be paying 20% of the cost today, and now they're going to be paying 20% of the cost.
Right.
But if they had not met their deductible, they would have paid the full cost, and now they're only paying 20%.
And I think that's the thing, and I'm sitting here, is I'm saying, well, it's not covered. And I think that's the thing from, from the consumerism part, when the employee goes and they're taking a stress test, and the doctor says, or that they get done, $500, you haven't met your deductible, it's $500. Well, the employee immediately says, well, that's not covered.
Right.
And it's not that it's not covered, it's just you haven't met your deductible.
So how about $100?
So now it's $100. So, and I think that's, as a counsel, that's the complaint that we've been hearing, that, you know, you're wanting me to go that extra step, and say this person, we caught them before they had a heart attack, it can save us hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right.
Well, now, you know, they're doing what we want them to do, which is, is take care of themselves. So I think that's what we've all heard, that that diagnostic, x-ray, and lab portion is something that our employees have not been jumping up and down about.
And that's a lot of money.
I mean, in consumer terms, not being covered and subject to the full amount of the deductible basically are the same thing from a financial standpoint to the consumer. And I think that's what we hear that they're saying not covered, and if they're having to meet the deductible to get it, for their standpoint, it's not covered.
Right.
And that's where, when I say not covered, I'm talking cash flow. We may say it's covered, but it's still going to cost $500 if it's covered, it's $500 if it's not covered.
Right. I mean, it's, yeah, it's significant. But I think that, I think this is a good happy medium, because if we said, we just want to say it's covered at 100%, for sure covered, and there's no expense out of theirs, then, I mean, we really think that's a 3% or 4% increase versus a 1% for this plan design change. So if that's something that the council wants to do, we would just have to put that in the budget. That's about the difference in going from an 80%, no deductible, to just saying 100%. It's about three or four more points.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Here?
Did you, will you ask him something? Genetic testing. Okay, right now, I guess I was doing a little research on this because my mom had cancer. Right now, our company only covers genetic testing for cancer. Is that right? And nothing else?
Yeah, I'm not real sure of that detail.
So, my concern is genetic testing compared to other companies. That's something that just, I just thought our policy, our policy right now only covers genetic testing for breast cancer only. And so, I just wondered, as far as genetic testing, how do we compare to other companies?
Most of our clients cover just that piece there. I mean, I could do some more research. I'm not sure the details of your plan, and you're not real sure either. So, we could look into that. But as a, the difference is, as a self-funded plan, you have the flexibility to make those changes. But if you were a fully insured client with Blue Cross, the way your plan is set up, as you, maybe as you've said it there today, that is the standard. That is the standard way that most of our fully insured clients, that the insurance companies set the plan design on that level. That's how it's covered with them as well.
After a meeting with you all the other day, I was coming in here preparing, prepared to have, ask for co-pays for the diagnostic, instead of just insurers paying the out-of-pocket until their deductible is met. But now, you are coming tonight seemingly with a better plan, whereas you are now offering the twenty percent copay, I mean, coinsurance. Is that correct?
That's what we're offering, yeah.
Which is better than the copay for the diagnostics, where our insurers are paying the out-of-pocket until the deductible is met. Then, therefore, your plan is much better than what I was going to propose, because you are now offering the twenty percent coinsurance.
It depends on what the copay would be.
Right.
So, I mean, if it was going to be a high copay, then it depends on what the copay was going to be for that service.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Lance? The one percent budget increase, the, on the one-on-ones, we added a half percent. Does the one percent include expected increase in usage? Is that?
Right. When we went back to look at your actual utilization, Blue Cross had a number. But when we said, here's their actual data, they felt that would be a little higher, actually.
Got it.
So, in theory, what that's going to do, the family plan, for example, the employee's deduction would go up to about another three dollars a month to have that option.
So, in essence, for three dollars more a month, they're going to
Yeah, we actually have the actual numbers here.
Eighty-twenty.
Right.
Match on the diagnosis.
Yeah, because the city's paying eighty percent of that cost, and employees only having to pay additional twenty, twenty percent. But we do have a new rate grid to give you guys, so you can see the actual contributions.
It'd be more than three bucks, though, I think.
I think it may be under, what it'd be, well, ten percent of three seventy-five is, yeah, you can get down to one percent, three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Honestly, under the PPO Plan, I think it's going from like thirty-one dollars to almost forty dollars. So, I mean, I think it's more like a nine-dollar family increase to the PPO.
At twenty percent.
Got you.
But again, although that is a, there is an increase on that premium, you know, you have one child that breaks their arm.
Right.
It makes up, makes up really quick.
Right. It's a hundred and twenty dollars a year for a family, more out of their paycheck. But one incident is three times more expensive than that.
Yeah. Okay. Any, any more questions? All right. Ms. Russell?
Mayor and council members, last council meeting, you approved all of our vendor requests. We are asking that you approve the two recommendations that we've made tonight. And one is to change the plan design on diagnostics and labs, going from the deductible and coinsurance to coinsurance only. And then, the second would be to change the PPO employee rates from the increase of ten point nine percent to the twelve point two percent. And that is to make up that difference on the diagnostics and labs.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we're making, Ms. Wright is indicating not to do it tonight, but I think that would, because of not wanting to make changes to the budget until after the head of the public hearing. But in terms of approving the policy change, I think that can be done. We just won't make the financial consequence this vote tonight.
Right. The budget was built with the ten point nine percent increase. So, that would change all the funds in the budget to make this PPO change. And we'd need to do that after the public hearing.
Okay.
Ms. Lance, I would like to make one suggestion, really ask the council members to see what your, your thought on this. Several years ago, we implemented a program to encourage our employees to use our, our wellness facilities. And we've gone, you know, I find it, we're insuring the entire family, but we're only allowing one person to go use our facilities. And if we are asking, we're insuring the entire family, then I think it's in the city's best benefit to be able to encourage the entire family to go work out, to use our facilities. And I know we've gone back and forth about fringe benefit, taxable benefit. And I think that, you know, as we're talking about consumerism, let's give our employees and their families the opportunity to be able to use those facilities, and then we can figure out the other things. That's just my, my opinion. I'd like to see what your opinions are.
Mayor, I agree with you. Actually, I brought that up in our one-on-one the other day with Rob and with Karen, the same point that you're making. I think that you're a hundred percent correct in that.
Think it'd be an excellent idea, let us figure out how to get that done.
Okay. And if we could, I think we did extend that, if I remember, didn't we extend that to retirees as well?
No, because of the tax issues.
Okay. Let's research that as well, on, as that is, on the insurance policy as well.
Hey, Pam, sorry, can I ask one more thing here?
Sure.
The, the amount that the PPO is going to end up being after the increase, just, what's that number? Of the increase, I'm sorry.
The increase is forty-one dollars and thirty-six cents.
What was the credit for the wellness?
Forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents.
All right.
It's a wash.
All right. Well, I know it's, I was curious. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much for working so hard on that, especially at our last council meeting. I think you heard the comments the council members were making, and you brought back a good proposal. So, great job on that. Do you have any more, any more questions? All right. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council?
Mayor? If I could, I'd like to make a comment. The other night, I was watching PBS, and I noticed on the D-Day Normandy Invasion, we had a local resident, Mr. Bill Allen, who was recognized for his heroism and service. And about eight or nine days ago, we had the healing field here in Murfreesboro. And it was put on by the Exchange Club, where they had about eight hundred flags. And it was my honor to transport a fellow named Mr. Harris Kennedy around the field. And he was a World War II veteran and a true American hero. And he told me some stories about France and Germany that were his experiences, and what phenomenal people we have in Murfreesboro who've laid the groundwork for us. And to those servicemen and veterans, I just want to say thank you.
Eddie, I have his memoirs, if you'd like to read them.
I'd enjoy that.
Seriously.
I'd enjoy that. I know he goes to church with you.
He write, he's written his memoirs, and they're very interesting.
Yeah.
And Mr. Allen has not only served his, his country, but has served the city of Murfreesboro for twenty-plus years as chairman of the golf commission.
Well, he's a golf commissioner.
And still, still serves as chairman. So, I don't want to leave on a sad note, but I think that it would be something that we need to mention. Many of us who have been involved in, in a city for many years, you can't think about Habitat for Humanity without thinking about Beth Smith. And Beth Smith passed away here recently. And her funeral service is Saturday at one o'clock at the Murfreesboro Funeral Home. And I talked with the director of Habitat today, and there had an event for Saturday at First Baptist Church that was going to be for the new faith house that's being built. And so, that has been postponed, and it's going to happen in August. But our thoughts and prayers go with the Smith family. And I've got the, the numbers, and I'll send out to the council, but how many homes were built under her leadership, and how many families were affected under her leadership. And she, she was a, a great example of all the things that are good in Murfreesboro. And our prayers go out to her family. For that, we'll call this meeting adjourned.